I started with MSBA as a consultant. I was an administrator in the Redner School District. It's a school district in St. Louis, Missouri, in St. Louis County. And I've worked for the district for 29 years. So last year was my 29th year and I retired from Redner, but I was also working as a consultant with MSBA at the same time. And once I retired, I just took on that work full-time. So I spent a lot of times, most of my career was in the Redner School District. I started as a teacher, a seventh grade teacher. I went and I taught eighth grade and I taught ninth grade and I taught eleventh grade and I taught 12th grade and I continued. I eventually became an administrator, assistant principal on the high school level. And then later I became a principal on the elementary level. And then I ended up becoming a principal on the middle school level, where I started teaching and I kind of went full circle there. So kind of got a systems view of education. I'm glad with my experience that I was able to just kind of go on all levels. And now I'm going to work with the governance level, which is board. So I appreciate you all having me here. I know this is your first time kind of meeting together as a team. So hopefully you can get something out of this. Feel free to ask questions as we go through it, because it's not so formal and so stuffy of a presentation. Okay? All right, so. I can't figure out how the word is. So, okay. Do a right click. Right? Okay, yeah, I'm left clicking. Okay, there you go. All right, all right. So have a little pre-question for you, okay? And I don't want you to answer this right now. I just want you to hold on to it. So how many board members does it take to change a light bulb?
Oh, no.
Okay? Think about that. How many boys, one of those jokes. So it is sort of a trick question, but the answer will be revealed as I go through this presentation, okay? So how many board members does it take to change a light bulb? All right, all right. So let's start with some celebrations. I always like to kind of get to know the board members. So if you don't mind introducing yourself as you kind of go around, everyone who's in here, introducing yourself. Talk about why you ran, why you became a board member, even if you've been a longstanding board member. Why you became a board member? And then talk about a point of pride for the Ozark School District. I was going to have you do that in your folders. You have some papers you can write on. There are some notes that you can write on. If you want to jot down some of those things, feel free to do that. And then I was going to have you make name cards. I see your name cards here, your name plates here. So if you don't mind, just think of it just for about 30 seconds. Think about those questions and I'm going to go around and ask you those questions, okay? All right, so if you don't mind, we can start over with Guy. Well, I'll start with the board members. So I'll start with you guys. So there you go, so.
Perfect. Guy Callaway ran really just because of the importance of Ozark School District to the Ozark community and my engagement and the importance of education.
Okay.
One of the primary reasons. And then pride for Ozark. There's a lot of things I think were in one of the OICs, one of the things that I think is going to, you know, say, that little step for Ozark, I think we should be very prideful in what this has been to become, so.
Okay, great. All right. Amber, is that right? Okay.
Amber Bryant. I became a board member because I felt that this is where I needed to serve. I have two kids in Ozark schools. And the pride of the, I think I think we're leaning in many areas. I think we've got good kids, great staff and parents that are really involved.
Great, thank you. All right, Patty?
Patty Costner. I ran in the board, it was 27 years ago. Mainly because I was PTA president prior and I was attending all board meetings for a couple of years there as kind of liaison. And the children, so all you got in the level, you know, that sort of all male board, male superintendent. And as I sat there, meeting after meeting, I realized they need a woman's point of view. They need another point of view. And I was also newly divorced, so they need a single parent's point of view. But mainly because I love kids. And you know me, you know that. I love kids and I really am an advocate for education. So put my name in the hat and was elected and fortunate to be re-elected. My point of pride is how outstanding the school district we have become. I think we shine, not just in southwest Missouri, but I think we're outstanding throughout the state. And I'm so proud of that. But my biggest pride really is this center, the Innovation Center. Just to walk through it, it just makes you feel so good. See the students and act and actually speak with them and let the students tell you. I had seniors that I talked to, they said they hated that they graduated because they loved the academy and they wanted to be able to be here longer. So that makes you feel good.
Yeah, both you and guys. And it is amazing building. I had the privilege of presenting in that building just a few months ago. And so for one of our certified board member trainees. So it's amazing building. So you guys have done excellent.
And another key thing I want to say, in the early years of being on the board, it was at that time, it was all about, we need to make sure everybody graduates, but really encouraging them to go to college. We have changed from that. Yes, we want kids to go to college and we want to help them to be successful men, but we want to reach each child. Give them some kind of training or let them experience, bring out their talent. What do they want to do after they graduate? Whether it's go right into the job. And some of our students, one of our senior group, Tom, well, no, already going into an automotive position. Because he went to the rear center of automotive. But then they go into the military. Our ROTC backs that. There's all kinds of opportunities now trying to help each child be successful.
That's good, that's good. Really picks their interest, yeah.
I'm Sarah Orr and I, schools are one of the most important things to a community. It's kind of great for me, I made my parents and grandparents were on the school board. My mother was, my grandfather. And when someone, we just always volunteered in the community. So when someone asked me to be on the school board, they were going off of it. Laura Johnson. And I thought, well, sure. And so she said, you know, it takes about three hours of reading before each meeting and so on. So he went over it.
Warnie, she said Warnie, right?
Exactly, yeah. And then I remember my husband said, are you sure you want to do that? So anyway, I said, oh yeah, let's go and do that. So and it's great. One of the points of pride, well, a few points of pride. Of course, I have high academics, the great teachers. I've always felt like I should be paying tuition here. So my kids, I have a 23-year-old and a 13-year-old. It's just, the buildings are great, the facilities, the teachers. High academics, everything.
Great.
Those are so important to a community.
All right, great. All right.
My name is Mark Jenkins. Read my rant. Just because I feel like we need good people to step up and serve in some capacity wherever they can within the community. Whether that be city council, school boards. Try to get local and at a base level, trying to get good people to step up and do their part. To look at fiscal responsibility and look at how we can improve school. As we already have a great school, that's a pride issue is that we have a great school. We have one of the largest schools in the state. Some of the best performing teachers, best performing students. And looking at how we can get a well-rounded school in place. And control part of the community, get productive members of society and then stay here. Okay?
I'm Christina Tensing. Similar to all these other answers. I ran because I felt like that's what a person should do to make an impact. Contribute. Good. I don't know, it's already good. Keep it good. Keep the schools good and protected. Contribute some more ideas. I'm a teacher, so I have a passion for education anyway and kids and. And it's important to, I'm a very conservative person. So I'm like, I think like they were saying, to keep it vocal, to keep it, you know, connected with parents and people in the community, just to be a regular, I don't know, a regular conservative. So it's important. There are other things coming into other schools, which are supposed to come in that don't really fit Ozark values. So I think that is important. Point of pride is, I was going to say, all the different programs. I've met so many teachers and they're doing things with their students and the different programs, like you, for example, GROTC. We just got back, we got another national championship in there. I mean, everybody's got all their different things that they're succeeding in. This aren't, you know, like, so the kids are so exceptional. I teach at a college and the Ozark kids are good. Good students, you know, compared, so.
Okay. Yeah. Well, thank you all for that. I'm going to move right along. There's a book called The Governance Court. It's a great book to read, especially for new board kind, newer forming boards. It's written by Campbell and Pullman. And they talk about the importance of having a shared moral imperative, okay? Importance of everyone who's associated with the school district to have that shared moral imperative, especially starting with the governance team, that board. And what they say is that a shared moral imperative is a relentless, there are certain key words, a relentless commitment to the achievement and success of all students, okay? So we always run and we always do things for different reasons. You know, our children are board members, I mean, our children are students. We have a connection, we are generational. So there are a number of different reasons why we run. Once you become a board member, you want to make sure that you have that shared moral commitment, okay? That relentless commitment. That's what they say, that moral imperative is a relentless commitment. Those two words resonate. Because when you think about the word relentless, it may have like almost a negative connotation to a certain point, but it just means that you're absolutely, you're absolutely in it for the good and right reason, okay? For the success and achievement of all of your students, okay? So that's one of the things that we're going to be talking about as we go along, of what that shared moral imperative is. Our outcomes for today, we're going to talk about collective authority, okay? And collaborative governance. We're going to also talk about the key roles of the board. And so there are essentially six key roles of the board. I know I have five listed there, but they're kind of like doubled up. So they, the board, their key role is to clarify district purpose, okay? To monitor performance, okay? To also connect with the community. And we're going to talk about how all those things and board responsibility for itself and superintendent delegation. The other one is superintendent evaluation, but it kind of goes with delegation as well, okay? We're going to also talk about your ethics policy and we're going to have a deep dive into your ethics policy. And we're going to really focus on board responsibility for itself and superintendent delegation. Because we like to really get into that when we have new form of board and we're doing these workshops for newer forming boards, okay? And then we're going to talk about some of Ozark's own cultural practices. And then we're going to end with some next steps for our the Ozark governance team. All right, let's look at this picture right here. Let's answer this question. What do these things have in common? There are four pictures there. What do they all have in common? Multiple parts. Yeah, and you shout out, you just go ahead and shout out. What was that?
Sum is greater than.
Oh, man, you just, you kind of stole my thunder there. Yes, but multiple parts, sum is greater than the parts. What does that mean? That's a quote from Aristotle. The sum is greater than the whole of the parts. What does that mean? We hear that, we hear that quote all the time, but what does it really mean?
To me, if any part is missing, it's not functioning.
Absolutely, yeah. The entire thing cannot operate at fully, at full maximum capacity without one piece of it missing, okay? And that means it's also powerful, okay? It also says sum is greater than the whole of the parts, which means that each part has a responsibility, right? So each point has a responsibility, however, together they make a team. And so if you look at those pictures up there, you think about the engine. If one piece is missing in the engine, it can't run, okay? It can't function. That's the picture of Iwo Jima, right there, when they were raising the flag. So it took all of those, those guys to help they get their flag raised, okay? The bottom right facing you is a picture of a brain. And it's like a puzzle piece. So we all, we do know that if there's a certain part of your brain that's not functioning or that's, you know, that's missing for whatever reason, then of course the entire body cannot operate at maximum capacity. And in this picture over here, this is, this is dating. I didn't want to put my trinket joke there, because I would have, if I would have told us that a cartoon from my generation, it would have been G-Force. Anybody ever heard of G-Force? So there you go. So I'll explain G-Force. G-Force was a group of kids and they all had bird-like abilities. And then they all had individual abilities and they would always go up against some type of villain. And when they would go up against this villain, they could never conquer the villain as individuals. It wasn't until they came together and they said, G-G-G-Force. And then it became this machine. It was around the same time as Speed Racer. So I'm dating myself, I know I'm dating myself over here, so I apologize. But they became this massive machine and then they were able to defeat anyone. So I put the Power Rangers up there because the Power Rangers is based on G-Force. It's the same concept. But then probably our kids and our kids' kids are there familiar with more Power Rangers. So it's the same thing, that as individuals, they have power, however, they cannot function, cannot overcome any type of major task without working as a team, okay? All right, so look at these pictures also. I'm really big on graphics. So you're elected as individual citizens, citizens, correct?
Yes, sir.
Then you also, but you become a governance team once you're, once you're elected. What do these two pictures convey? Is there some symbolism behind the pictures?
The same people, although the first picture is they're separated. And then they're standing there, the individual person. But you come across, you come together as a team or as a board.
Absolutely, Patty, thank you. So as individuals, you are elected, you run as individuals. You're elected as individuals, right? However, once you're on the board, you are a team. And what else do you notice about that picture of the team? What do they have that the individual citizens don't have?
Supervisors.
They have supervisors. They have capes. The cape symbolizes, even though in that cartoon, like, no capes. So, but they all have capes. And so what it's showing is that as individuals, yes, you're elected. You run on certain situations, there are certain situations while you run. And then that, those are all individual reasons that you have power. You do have that. However, your true power doesn't come until you are a team. You don't get your red cape until you all manage to work together as the G-Force, as the Power Rangers, right? Okay? And also, this concept is what we call, and remember this key word, because those of you all who are new will be at the training in Branson. If you're coming to that training, you'll hear me talk about that a lot. I think I'm presenting this session, I'm not sure. But you'll hear me talk a lot about collective authority, okay? There's such thing as, this is actual a phrase, a term, okay? There's such thing as individual authority and then you have collective authority. And collective authority is rooted and grounded in policy and law, okay? It is both, okay? And a point to policy, and this is your policy, I think it's your policy BBF. It says, authority rests with the, or BBA. Authority rests with the whole board. No individual board member has legal authority, legal authority to request action from the staff, change policies or direct operations, okay? Support the decision made by the majority vote of the board. So as individuals, you have a voice. You have a right to vote. You have a right to discuss your vote. However, you can, once, once that vote is finalized through the board, once there's a majority vote for a forum, you have to represent the team, okay? Their vote becomes a team. So you have that individuality, however, you can only function legally as a group, okay? It's also rooted in case law, okay? And one of the more recent case law, the 1996, not too recent, but one of the more recent, because case law, they date back to the 1800s. You can really, do I have any lawyers in here? Damn. All right, so if you did some research on case law, since schools have been formed, they had like forms of boards, okay? And there was case law that dates back to the 1800s. But one of the more recent is a situation that occurred right here in Missouri, state of Missouri, in Kansas City. It's Columbo versus Buford, where there were individuals who were not operating within the stipulations of collective authority. And it became this big deal. And that's why a lot of case law came out of that, because the district ended up getting sued. Individuals were sued. The superintendent lost his job. There was a lot, it was, it was chaos. And because of that, because individuals were operating on individual authority and not collective authority, there were a lot of problems that occurred. And so collective authority, I just really want you to know that, because we hit it hard, we really hit it hard, especially for new board members to understand that you are a team, you are a G-Force, as I was talking about, and not as individuals. And that's rooted in law and policy. So let me give you a scenario. Okay, board president, I'm going to read this. Board President John is dissatisfied with superintendent's performance. John believes that several board members are also dissatisfied with the superintendent's performance, although none have explicitly said it to him. Every year, the local media publishes a report on how the district is doing and gets a statement from the board as part of this process. After being contacted by a local reporter for the annual report, John states that the board feels the superintendent is not doing well, which has resulted in a negative impact on the district. As a result, they will be meeting soon to discuss his performance. Question. Is Board President John operating within the stipulations of collective authority? Why or why not? I want you guys to educate me, answer that question. I'll let you read it a little bit, just so we can sink in.
No, he's not, because he hasn't talked to everyone.
Okay.
And he did not have an official statement in front of the group. And you really should not even talk about it.
You're right. There's some other, there's some other policies. I haven't even gotten to the other policies that he's breaking, right? I haven't even thought about getting to that. But we're just talking about collective authorities. So Amber's like, no, he's not. Because, and she said it, she hit it right on the nose. Why is he not? Because he hasn't done what? Because you said he hasn't talked to the rest of the group, right? However, that first part says.
He believes in several.
He believes in several. And even, let's, let's say, if, if he talks to the people and he heard from their own mouths that, yeah, we're not satisfied with superintendent. What did he do right there that's still not within collective authority?
He spoke without the authority of the board.
He spoke without the authority of the board, okay? He said, we're going, we, we, he talked about it, like, you can believe that and you could have spoken to people who believe that, but making that statement that we believe that as a board is operating outside of collective authority. And it can cause a lot of other problems, okay? Were you about to say something, Sarah?
No, no, I'm just nodding.
Yeah, yeah. So definitely, he was not operating within collective authority.
But also, like Amber said, policy-wise, he talked about personality. Even the person employed by the district to the meeting.
Right, right. To the meeting and you said something like, and that's, you haven't had a closed, he hadn't had a closed session yet, but that's, that's confidential information, you know? And you can't be disclosing things like that. There are other unintended consequences associated with this. I just wanted you to focus in on collective authorities, but we're going to get to some, some of these other things as well.
And he still would have been wrong if he said, I feel superintendent is not doing well.
Right, right.
Right, I mean, even if he didn't say, we're going to have a meeting and any of that, just the.
Because I, once again, using that pronoun, that's still operating as individual authority. That's still I. So I thank you for that. That's a great point.
Yeah, just, yeah, just something I pulled out of it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, he's, he still would have been wrong. So you have to be ready to cover. And you opened up a whole nother can of worms, because the media wasn't even asking about the superintendent. So now the media's like, what's going on? You know they're going to help us, yeah. So that's a whole nother can of worms. All right. All right, so key roles of the board, I have to do a lot of clicking here, so. Board, clarify district purpose and establish its goals and outcomes. You do that through your mission, your vision, your values, okay? Your CSIP, okay? So Ozark CSIP. So how do you clarify district purpose? Like, where are we going? Okay, what are we doing to? Also, another key role is to monitor district performance. You monitor district performance by looking at your academic progress, okay? How are your students doing? Okay, we know that, that's a major role of the board to monitor district performance, okay? What are, how are your programs doing? We just said that this building right here has, you know, it's, it's a great building. It has like pathways for students. So just monitoring how the progress, so we know it's a great program, but you still have to monitor, how is it progressing, okay? You also monitor your CSIP, you look at your budget. You monitor your allocations, your spending, you approve your budget. But then throughout the year, you should make sure that you're monitoring that budget, okay? So that's how the board monitors district performance. Also, you have an obligation to connect with the community. You do that, just like we're doing now, okay? You have your meetings, you connect with the community. Some boards have committees they serve on. Some of them invite individuals and stakeholders to CSIP planning and other things like that. So there are a number of different ways you do that and you connect your meeting to your agenda. You also take responsibility for yourself. And what does that mean? That means as individuals, remember, I said you run as individuals, but you operate as a team, okay? However, you still need to take individual responsibility and board collective responsibility, okay? So you take responsibility for yourself by being very ethical, by being a team, by being a team player, okay? That's a key role of the board. And I noticed that I have a highlight because we're going to explore that a little bit more. I also have employ a superintendent and you delegate authority to that superintendent, okay? So I also have that highlighted, because we're going to be talking about, you employ, you delegate, and you, the last thing, evaluate. So you employ, you delegate, and evaluate. And you all are going to be in the transition of a superintendent very soon, right? Right on the horizon. All right, so let's talk about, let's go deep. The board taking responsibility for itself. So you can think about that as being defined as the board collectively and individually, collectively and individually, takes full responsibility for board activity and behavior. Members are obligated to express their opinions and respect others' opinion, but ultimately speak with one clear voice. That's not an easy thing to do, okay? Because everyone has opinions, okay? Everyone's had different beliefs. Everyone comes from a different background and have different schemes and different understanding of how things operate. So it's good to have a team. And when you have structures in place to help your team function correctly, it's really good to have those differences of opinion, because you have the structures in place to help you operate as a team. So you want to be able to express your opinions. You want to be able to pass your vote, have a discussion about that. But ultimately, you want to be able to arrive at consensus when you're finalizing a vote and speak as one clear voice. So when you're out of your community and people approach you and they're like, well, you, I, I know how you felt about that thing. Why, why didn't the board vote this way? Like, because I'm one person, okay? But the board, we operate as a collective unit. We have one clear voice. So you understood what my position was on that? Sure, but I respect my fellow board members, because we made a decision together. The seven people who you elected to be on this board, okay? So that's very important. All right, so here we're going to go, get to some work now. So we really like to start on some of these, these, these beginning workshops with your ethics policy. A lot of board members ask us and they say, wow, it's, it's just a lot of policy out there. I don't, you know, we don't expect any board member to come onto the board. And even board members who have been on the board for a long time, we don't expect you to know those policies for a minute, right? Because there are a lot of them. However, we always give recommendations. And we say for any board member, if you're coming onto the board, if you don't read any other policies, you should read your policy BBF, which is your board ethics policy. So in your notebooks, if you haven't opened those up already, on the right side of that white sheet, there is a blue sheet and it's your board ethics policy. I want you to take a minute to, on that, 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 that code of ethic sheet, put a check mark and I want you to be honest with yourself, because I'm not going to ask you to share individually, okay? So put a check mark by each ethical statement that either you or a fellow board member has had some difficulty following over the course of your time on the board, okay? So for Patty, for your 20-plus years on the board, if there's a situation where you or a board member had had some, put a check mark right there. For our newer board members, you don't have the experience, you don't have the background in scheming. But put check marks about those things that you think this might be difficult. This just might be difficult, and put a check mark on those things. And go ahead and, and you're gonna sum up your checks and put them on the post in, in just a minute. After you finish going through that, you have all your check marks, just tally up the number and put that number on that little poster sheet that I just sent you. Okay, just a total number. So you have five check marks, put five on there. You don't have to put your name or anything. Oh, there's a back, there's a back to that, I'm sorry, I didn't tell you all that. Did you notice it was a back to that?
Oh, no.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's my fault. But, so, well, it didn't print out. So how many are on the front sheet?
Sixteen.
Oh, no, no, that's right, that's right. That's all, that's all. Yeah, I know, some, some has added like seventeen, because that's our power. Some have, some have, so that's a vacuum, but, no, you're all, you're right. Hey, I'm learning from the bad memories.
I wish you'd got my check mark and not paid this.
I'll go through that one.
I'm sorry, but.
But, but this is important, because this is a work, worthwhile type of activity, so. Let's look, I usually can do an average here, but I'm just gonna quickly go through that. So we have three, we have eight, we have three again, we have seven, we have eleven, we have one, uh, and I didn't, and, so I can, I don't have any necessary, like, you all, but this is good enough for here. The purpose of this activity is not to call anybody out and say that, but to have you all recognize and realize that it's not easy following your code of ethics. There are reasons why it's not easy, okay? So, some of the reasons why it's not easy is because sometimes people are unaware. You have a lack of awareness of what your code of ethics are. And that's where it comes back to what I just said about some of those new board members. If I say, if you don't read any other policy, read your code of ethics policy, okay? Read your BBF, because people are like, oh, I didn't realize that I was breaking our code of ethics policy by doing this thing. So you're just unaware, okay? The other one is limited practice, and this happens with a lot of our newer board members, because you haven't had the time to really, this is your first meeting. So you haven't had the time to really engage with the public. You haven't had the time to engage with the staff. You haven't had time to do a lot of those things. So you're like, I, you know, I just, I, I haven't had the, the practice to do those things, okay? And then also, confusion. Because if you're reading all those things, you have to think about what is it saying, okay? They use some words, nerd delegation, or whatever, it can be like, what does that mean? Okay, so I'm just confused about, I'm not, it's not like I'm not trying to follow it, I'm just confused, okay? The other one is manipulation of the meeting. So pulling out key words and like, I am following my code of ethics because I'm doing this one thing. But I'm like, is that really what it's saying? Okay, or are you manipulating what that says, okay? And this is all general board members, okay? The other one is contradictory interest, okay? Then another, what do you, that means, contradictory interest? What does that mean?
The person has similar ideas.
Yes, yes. That code of ethics, the board's code of ethics is not necessarily individuals' code of ethics. They don't abide by the same ethical kind of code, okay? Of one of those things. And the other one is personal disregard. I know what they are, I know what they mean, I just don't care, okay? And that's a danger to them. Because if you think about it, what's the difference between the top three and the bottom three?
Intention.
Intention, absolutely. What is, go ahead and clarify a little bit more.
Yeah, if the person just doesn't know versus if they decide to disregard it.
Absolutely, so it's intention. So, the top three, okay, are about skill. You don't have the skill to follow your code of ethics, because you just don't know about them. You haven't practiced them. The bottom three are about will. So the difference is between skill and will, okay? You can always teach skill. When new board members come on, they just don't have the skills to do that? It is the responsibility of the board, that's what we're talking about. Board taking responsibility for itself. It's a responsibility for some of those veteran board members, some of those tenured board members, to teach those newer board members, this is what this means, okay? Because you need to teach the skill. It's okay not to have the skill. Don't expect any new board member to have a skill. However, when we do have a board member who comes on, and that board member doesn't have the will, that's a danger. Because that board member tends to operate outside of collective authority and not follow those code of ethics, because they just have a personal disregard for yourself, okay? Alright, let's do some scenarios. So on your, uh, right side, I think, here, there's a scenario sheet. So we're gonna do a lot of activity and kind of group, a little role play to a degree. Uh, I'm gonna read you two scenarios, okay? It's a lot, so you can follow along with me. Feel free to, as I'm reading that, to underline, highlight, check, anything that you see is like, oh, this, this is not right. It, it's just something doesn't resonate with this board member is doing, or these board members are doing, put a check mark, okay, as I read. Alright, scenario one, board member Barry is always late to board meetings. But board president Sam believes in starting meetings on time. Because of this, board member Barry did not vote, did, did not get to vote on an issue that was very important to him. Other board members asked Sam to delay the vote, knowing how important this was to board member Barry. But the board president refused to do so. Sam stated that respect works both ways, and the board has a lot of work to do. Barry feels that Sam is just being vindictive and hypocritical, because there have been times when the meeting hasn't started on time due to Sam being there. To prove his point, he goes to the secretary and asks her to give them a proposal list of dates when Sam emailed her and the superintendent the times when he was going to be late. When the secretary stated that she wouldn't feel comfortable sharing information from the personal emails of another board member, Barry says she is just protecting Sam and that she needs to just do it. Not imagine her, right? Because he has a right to know, okay? Moving into scenario two, board member Carl is particularly critical of board president Sam. He thinks the meeting should be run much more efficiently. He makes sure to point out to Sam every time he, in Carl's opinion, violates parliamentary procedure. This makes Sam nervous, and he makes even more mistakes. In one meeting, board member Stuart told Carl to, let it go. We do not have to follow parliamentary procedure perfectly. Board member Tamara disagrees, stating the rules are important, important, and if Sam is going to hold Barry to starting the meeting on time, then Carl can hold Sam to the parliamentary rules. This argument goes on for a while, and the meeting goes on. The local newspaper reports on the fight as opposed to the excellent presentation the system superintendent gave or the dramatic impact the new reading curriculum has made. Okay, alright, we're gonna start with those two things, okay? What you're going to do is you're gonna work in groups, and you're going to problem solve for this board, okay? This is a board behaving bad, okay? There are some things on there, they're bringing a lot of code of ethics. And we're gonna use the problem solving technique. There's a problem, I don't know if you've heard of it. Uh, Christine, you may have heard of it as a teacher, but it's a problem solving technique called the ideal problem solving technique, where you identify the problem, you define the causes of it, okay? You explore options, like this is what we should do, okay? You put those options into the action, and then, of course, you should be evaluating. You should be looking at. So think about this acronym, okay? As we're gonna talk about what can we do for this board. And you're gonna answer essentially in groups, two kind of questions as we go through these scenarios. Which code of ethics statements are being violated by these members of this board? And how, okay, so the scenarios one and two, what ethical statements on your sheet are they breaking, okay? And then the other question is, what needs to happen with the scenario to abide by their code of ethics and to improve board relations? So in other words, what are they breaking? Think about the ideal, and how can this be improved? So what, what can we improve upon with this? And we're gonna work on this in groups. So the three of you all can work together, okay? And then the three of you all can work together square. And then the superintendent, you, you can join a group and, you know, you guys can definitely feel free to join a group to kind of work with, if you want, okay? Alright, so go ahead and answer those two questions, look at your ethics, think about the first three scenarios, alright? I'm trying to me to take my jacket off. Yeah, it is. I get hot on these pretty tenses, because I'm up here.
I know, I was, I was almost forgetting.
I'm pushing and pull that. Yeah, I'm, I'm pull that, I always keep this in my work. Hot, because I know, I have to be, I have to chill somewhere, I just need to pour it out. You have a one and two, you're working on one and two. What code of ethics are they breaking? Oh, the copy of it, yeah. Oh, yeah. That's not, that's, okay. What, what's, what is Sam doing? Oh, yeah, we got, got, edit that. On your scenario sheet, it's the same, now, now, that's fine. They have a printed copy, so print a copy, go off the printed copy, that's fine, yep. There's just a few differences that I changed.
Okay.
If you haven't moved on to scenario two, so sir, why don't you go ahead and transition to that? You don't have to get every single ethics on there, because there's quite a bit.
Quite a bit, yeah, okay.
We were just about an hour.
Yeah, I know, I'm saying. You can't call this board for hundreds of hours. Alright, take about three to five more minutes to just finish scenarios one and two, because we wanna get to three and four, five and six. I know it's a lot. Don't feel like you have to be perfect with them.
Yeah, 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 I, you know, there are some times I, I mean, I was, I was doing HR work, and, uh, I was, I plowed through a couple of HR, there were a couple of interviews. I was like, finally saw him there, and I, I just did it for whatever reason, but I was happy, you know, I was, I was, I was never attached to like doing anything other than that, so. You know, so it did, it did work out for whatever reason, it was the best thing for me, I think.
Middle school, it's rough, but I actually enjoyed that, being a president of middle school, that was my idea when I was.
You know, the high school, you have every activity, everything, everything, sports, and maybe, I mean, it takes so much time with your family. Whereas in middle school, there's a lot of chaos, but not as much time with your family.
Yeah, chaos, yeah. Alright, uh, alright, so we're gonna come back, and we'll talk about this, uh, one, all of these things. The name is the same board, okay? So let's just start. Uh, let's, let's see what you all came up with. So what are some of the things, some of those code of ethics that they kind of violated? And let me get my sheet so I can, because I don't know right offhand either. Alright, any group want to share, like, for scenario one, what are some of the things they violated in scenario one?
What comes back to number one?
Mm-hmm, you said, I, I didn't hear you say it, you said.
Number one.
Number one.
I think Mark was gonna speak too, because it's just getting focused on the.
The focus is now, it's, it's, they don't have their moral imperative, right? So the focus is, number one is probably gonna be throughout, right? It's gonna resonate throughout, okay? Uh, what else? Number three, so recognize that individual board members have no authority to speak on the board. And I just talked about what that is called, it's called what? They're violating what? What type of authority?
Collective.
Collective authority, okay? You can't speak as individuals for the board, okay? Anything else?
He went out, asked the secretary, wouldn't Sam late, and then, oh, would you put this on agenda?
Absolutely. So he was operating, he was like, just do it. Using Nike campaign slogan on there, right? And like, I, I'm, I'm, I'm your boss, kind of, just do it, you know? And that's, and he was being the bitch. So he was definitely exercising individual authority and not following policy and law by collective authority, okay? Yep, any others?
Number eight.
Number eight, make every effort to attend all board meetings. Yes, on time. I mean, that's part of attending, you know, as stewardship, you know, being a good board member, okay? How do you do that? Okay, so, yeah, any others? What about two?
He said six.
Six for number two. Six, for number two or number one, you were saying?
Oh, for scenario one, sorry.
Okay, uh, scenario one, encourage ongoing communication between board members and stakeholders. Yeah, absolutely.
Say hey, I'm late, or, I'm, 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 go here.
Absolutely, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, I mean, just, you know, have fun, policies in place, and when you're ready, how does it work, okay?
We have patio, base time. Or did it air for once?
There you go.
We follow names.
Whatever you need to do, you know? Yeah, absolutely.
I was trying to, because they're just cold.
All right, any others, uh, what about two? So about the Robert's Rules of Orders, what, what do you have on there?
Well, I said Mark, the Terry procedure should be followed.
Yeah, absolutely, it should be, I mean, it's not, like, I mean, they were wrong in saying we need to follow, follow certain procedures, however, maybe there were some ethical things that were violated by the way they approached, what would you think? And did y'all have anything that would? Number one, you said number one, right? House over there. Okay, so we know number one, because their focus is about this individual, it's like, almost like they're trying to get back at Sam, and like, because, oh, well, you held very late, and whatever case may be, so, they're like, a lot of mid case type of things, okay?
It was discriminating against each other, in a sense.
Yeah, it is, and actually, it actually is, because they're, they're trying to one-up the other person, you know?
Are they in closed session here or open session?
In, in the Robert's Rules, uh.
And it's in these scenarios.
Oh, in those scenarios, uh, some of them are, you're gonna see some of them are closed sessions, some of them are open sessions, okay? So it doesn't specify, if one, it kind of lets you know it's closed session.
It's closed.
Yeah, uh, you said number four, four, work with board members to establish effective board policies, okay? How so? Because what, you said number four, how so? Work with, uh, to, how does that connect to two? As far as getting rules for how the boards are operating? Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah, that's, that's your, lots of operations, you know, this is part of operations, you're gonna see in, in some of those trainings, that we talk about that, in one session after them, it's called board operations. So just establishing those policies, okay? So, and there are probably some other things on there, what are some suggestions you all have for that one and two to help this board? What should they do? We kind of talked, started talking about some of them. Some suggestions? Communicate, and, and, and that's easier said than done, right? Because communication is always one of the number one things that teams have problems difficult with, whether your husband or wife team, whether your child and parent team, you know, board team. Communication is difficult, so it's easier said than done, what do you do to help communication? What kind of things can you do, specific things?
Set expectations.
Set expectations, okay? Abide by those policies, set some expectations, set some rules, we'll talk a little bit more about that, anything else?
I think within the school board, it's even more difficult because of certain law issues where communication can't be disluted outside of a board meeting.
Absolutely.
Where we can't just have group conversations.
So what you're saying is we make sure that boards are educated, every individual member is educated about what you can and what you can't say, what you can't do, so, yes. Any other suggestions for either one or two to help them? So we talked about setting expectations, being educated, understanding the policy, keeping the moral imperative on, keeping the focus on students.
Those are all strategies. Good, good, a little church from there, learn how to deal with.
Be more respectful, yeah. All right, let's go on to the next one, okay, so, and, and I think I'll probably read off the sheet, so I can make sure that they're aligned, if I can remember. All right, so, scenario three, board member Tamara does not say much in the board meeting, but she makes up for it on social media. She, she, she lied, she lied, she, we, we're laughing, but these are based on, based on some fact, okay? She lives during the meeting and provides side comments during the meeting, then she dastex the meeting after the fact, adding her opinions and disparaging those that voted differently than she did. Her social media account has become quite popular in the community, but her posts are frustrating the other board members. When board president Sam confronts her, she tells him that it's a free country, that the people have a right to know her opinions, and there is nothing Sam can do about it. All right, scenario four, football coach Frank, notice this is, this is a big one, okay? Football coach Frank took the district to the state championship, but the superintendent and principal have to drug, struggle with the coach for years. He is sometimes verbally abusive to the students and occasionally other staff members. He refuses to follow district rules regarding purchase orders and reimbursements. When he submitted a receipt for reimbursement that included alcohol, there was the last straw. The superintendent and the principal recommended that he not be renewed as the coach for next year. Needless to say, this was controversial. The district's attorney weighed in, as well as many community members on other sides of the issue. There was a heated discussion in closed session regarding this decision. Board member Tamara advocated for the district to give the coach another chance. Ultimately, the board voted four to three to not renew the coach's contract. Tamara has a son on the team who she believes has benefited greatly from Coach Frank. She took this person, this decision personally. She refused to vote on other motions made in the meeting and posted on her social media page, "The board has spoken." They would not listen to reason. They clearly do not care about the leadership Coach Frank has brought to the students on his team. Fight back. All right. Some things pop out? I didn't hear you, I didn't hear what you said. And sadly, these are not worst-case scenarios. We, we, there were some boards who have done worse, right? All right, so, let's go back to, we're going, we're gonna do this a little bit fast since you're on the process, just kind of skim through some of these things, figure out what it, what it can be, but I really want you to engage in a conversation on what they need to do to make it back, okay? All right, make sure you have the conversation about, okay, so they probably, this answer is, well, what can we do about it?
Oh, yeah, what can we do about it?
Yeah, what should they do?
We're just training again with.
Yeah, I know.
So what is it?
All right, about a couple minutes, and we'll just have some open conversation about it. For about thirty seconds. All right, let's talk about this board, so, three and four gets a little deeper, right? A little deeper, what do we have? What, what are some violations they had?
One, two, six.
We can talk more about the.
Let's talk about that. I know, really. Anything that's like, specifically, yes, it really violated this one. I know we could probably take all of, all right, and we don't have to say one, because we know that they're always out of violation number one.
I think number three is, is one of the biggest ones.
Yeah, recognize individual board members have no authority to speak or act for the board, because, oh, man, is that Tamara, right?
Yeah.
And she was doing a lot of things, right? You know, as far as social media, you know, so, yeah, what else?
Number fifteen goes right into that.
Uh-huh. Express, express personal opinions, but, once the board has acted, set the wheel of the majority, okay? That's what we're talking about, you know? The vote was four to three, so, you know, and it's okay that, you know, if people are asking, like, okay, why did Sam, like, well, you know, there's a lot of things that we can't discuss, because she violated, and she also violated what? In joining in those posts. Sunshine, I come from, yeah, okay? You have to be very careful of that, and social media can be, damn, it's so dangerous, okay? They, well, they were discussing, uh, saying that she does that in the opening, but then she talked about fighting back for Coach Frank, and then obviously. Oh, yeah, yeah, I, we're on both of them, we can just talk about this both of them, so, they're kind of connected, so, you know, her social media posting, and then her posting about Coach Frank there, all that, what about that? What about number four? So what are some things that get specifically with that?
I think there's any, you know, I mean, one going, it's part of what we did, like, we'll say, you know, that things are. I think the, I think it goes, I mean, for her, it goes back to, to me, number three, it's a lot of things that Karen did that she's continued to issue that information. Uh, and then we talked about the conflict of interest a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Just as her stating the, her influence, and there are different ways, we talked about ways it would happen to us.
Right.
With kids, and really the, you know, there can be influence, it's positive influence that a coach has.
Right.
But it's the influence also, it might come into play more.
Absolutely.
And those are two, you know, two, two things that we discussed.
And that'd be hard to separate, because no matter how we look at it, we run for the board, and we prepare for our babies, our individual babies, like, everyone knows our, our, getting hold of our babies, right? Well, our individual babies, they have a, a strong hold on our heartstrings, so it's difficult when you know something is good for your individual baby, not to advocate for that thing, you know, it's very difficult. However, once you become a board member, you have to realize that you do advocate for your baby, but you're advocating for all babies.
You speak.
You speak as a board member, because, it, because even if her son benefited from Coach Frank, if he hurt one other child, that's enough, right? Her son benefited, he didn't hurt her child, and he could have been for various reasons, but if he hurt one other child, it's just enough that he's not good for all babies, okay? Because remember, moral imperative, all students succeed, okay? All right, uh, what are some suggestions, uh, yes?
Oh, we're starting, but it's hard to know all the difference. And I, I always look back to the both sides, and, and, or it's like, the both sides, it's hard to know all the stuff that's gonna happen, did, did they, did they go through due process, did they hear both sides of the story, and did they talk to Coach Frank, or did they write about their, you know?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, process, and so, yeah, that, that's also one of those things, and also, we're gonna talk a little bit more about that too, so, yes, as a board, you want to know, you want to make sure, because you have to monitor performance. Part of monitoring performance is monitoring your superintendent, and how your superintendent is performing, however, you have to be careful of saying, "Let me see this paper," or, "Let me see," did you go through the process, you gotta do a little study, because sometime, that's what we call getting to the weeds, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that later, okay? However, you do, when you're making a decision, you have to look at the data, so, look at the data, what is the data show? And we have some data on Coach Frank, some obvious data, what was that obvious, something that I was, the principal and the superintendent made a decision on, is that he liked drinking, you know, he's made. It's included alcohol, so you have some obvious data, knowing that the superintendent and the principal did that through, they were smoking alcohol, okay?
Here's another thing, is number five, it says delegate authority for the administration of tools.
Yeah, I was wanting to.
Okay, so the board delegates that, so you have to trust your administrators and superintendent that they did do, do.
That, that, yeah, I was gonna get that, but I know number seven is gonna really.
You can't micromanage do those pieces.
Yep, absolutely.
And if they come to you with a recommendation, we do not want to hire them, you need to trust, you can ask the questions of it, but you're not doing it.
Because it's key responsibility to the board, remember, I said, the board hires superintendent, delegates superintendent, evaluates the superintendent. So if that superintendent is making, uh, bad board decisions, they're firing people like Coach Frank left and right, whatever, then you evaluate the superintendent, not Coach Frank, okay? You gotta be very careful of that, so delegation, hold on to that one, because we're gonna really talk about that, okay?
And the, the delegation, and then, and then you will manage, there are appeals, there are appeals against, like, delegated to, the delegations that have been followed, then, they just.
Right, but if policy hasn't been followed, and the law hasn't been followed, that that boy.
Say it again, what you said about appeals, Christina, I didn't, I didn't catch that.
Oh, oh, I was just saying, like, if there are, like, you, like, you set up a delegation, you know, maybe in a family, you say your oldest kid, you say, now, you're gonna babysit, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Care of your younger kids, but if your younger kids come to you and say, hey, the older kid did this thing that wasn't right, you know, then you hear the information, but.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Most of them want to say, no, you just follow what they say, well, I'm fine, you're just.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
So you've delegated authority, but if there's an appeal about something, then.
And your staff do have the right to petition the board, so that's what you're saying, it's like, when community members, and that's another, if you were smart, you got to connect with the communities, and your stakeholders. So your staff do have the right, they do have the right to go through due process, uh, but you have to understand, and so, we're not saying by delegation, that you're just blindly, just, uh, uh, just saying, oh, yes, whatever goes with the superintendent, you know, they have a right to appeal, and they have a right to do those, then petition the board. Yeah, absolutely, all right, so, what we're gonna do is, we're going to, well, let, well, let's talk about three, one, two, three, and four first. All right, so some strategies, you all mentioned some strategies, and some of these things I want to talk about a little bit. So, the first thing that this board should do, they should remember their number one, your number one. So, the first thing that this board should do, they should remember their number one, your number one ethic statement, and what is your moral imperative, okay? You have a relentless, remember those words, relentless commitment to the success of all students, okay? Not just your child, okay, as in Tamra, you know, she's advocating for the success of her child, what about all students? So, remember that moral imperative, create training and support for all board members, especially new members. That's an obligation of the board. What training programs do you have in there? Even veteran members, sometimes Patty was just talking about that MSBA week, we're gonna have someone who's gonna be able to train on Robert's Rules of Order. So, a lot of boards don't really necessarily know, understand Robert's Rules of Order, okay? It can be difficult to understand. Exercise manner, and that's not a mistake, it shouldn't be manners, but it's associated with manner. I'm gonna talk a little bit more about what manner means, okay? Exhibit collaborative practices, collaborate as a team, use your agenda, okay, to make decisions, let your agenda guide you on some things, okay? Assign in their life, and respect the roles of the officers, okay, and roles of those. So, make sure that you assign, they assign Sam as president, okay? There should be a, a, a level of respect that comes along with that, okay, on both sides. So, on all of the members who assign Sam as president, but then also with Sam as in that role. So, that's a, that's a reciprocal respect that comes along with your officer roles, okay? And including, which I had on the sheet, that was the reason why we had over there, your board secretary. So, whether your board secretary is a, a actual hired paid, uh, staff member, or if that board secretary is a part of the actual board, it still should be a respect to that. So, when that guy went to, I can't remember, and demanded that, uh, you know, that she give them that information, that's not a respect of that position, okay, in those roles. And then also, make sure that you develop norms, and we talked, we started talking about this a little bit, norms and guidelines for conducting meetings. So, let's talk a little bit more about what manner is. So, according to Kembly and Fuller, in that same book about, uh, moral imperative, uh, they talk about manner is the board, is part of the board taking responsibility for itself. It says the board has a responsibility to be civil and respectful, they have a responsibility to be ethical, and they have a responsibility to communicate in a positive way, okay? That is manner, they need to exhibit manner, okay? As associated with, like, manners, when you think about manners, can you have any of what that means? And they talk about a lot of other things that board, good boards do, but one of the things they're talking about when the board take a responsibility for themselves, is to make sure that we are exhibiting manner, okay? Look at this picture. Is this about exhibiting manner? Uh, guy with the mallet, anyone else care to share their feedback about the proposal? What does this picture show about this guy with the, the mallet?
He's a dictator.
He's a dictator, right? He's not operating within collective authority, it's all about him. Every, I don't know, that could be the board president, or it could be someone else, but the picture just shows that that is not about collective authority. Board norms, I don't know if you all have some existing board norms, maybe some of the, uh, veteran members can speak to this, but you all have a set of norms that operate, that you all operate back?
We did have some.
Okay.
And that's, that's a good point to bring those out.
Yes.
It was like five years ago or something, that presentation developed those.
Mm-hmm, yeah, because we also do presentations on developing norms, it's an entirely different workshop, so, however.
We had someone give her, it must be.
Yeah, there you go, yeah. So, uh, however, it, it's so great, it's so important, because norms help guide, okay? Norms help do those things, it helps. Okay? It helps you be more collaborative, okay? That's me, under that speaking too loud, okay? There, okay, uh, helps you commit, you know, I'll get you in a minute, Patty, uh, I see your hand, uh, Ray. Uh, and then ensures accountability, and I like that last one, because norms gonna do that, and manage conflict. And here's how, if you have a set of guidelines that you all agree upon, because when you develop your norms, you should agree upon all those norms, okay? Like being on time, because that's a norm, like being on time for meetings. When that guy is late, when Barry is late, Sam doesn't have to say, I'm starting the meeting without him, I'm doing all this, we could just say, our norm says we need to be on time, right? So, it can minimize conflict, because you're not directly personalizing it, you're not pointing the finger at Barry, you're saying, this is what I norms him, as a group, rules say. Like teachers, teachers are the best teachers, or the ones who get their students to come up with classroom expectation, and their classrooms, they're like, gee, they asked the student, this is, we use this trickery device, right? And they were like, what do you all think should happen if this happened? They're like, just this, and she's always hard, it's always hard on the staff. And the teacher guides that, they're like, well, we're gonna have these five things that we're gonna always remind them, and so, that teacher for the rest of the year, they're like, oh, you're breaking our schedule, right? It's like, really, don't make sure that's what they're doing, oh, we're not using our hands. You know, so, every those norms, we can utilize it, okay? Patty, you about to say something? Sorry.
I, I love this, look at this, for norms, and maybe that's something we decided as a board, have a work day, just us to talk about some things like that. We go through it, and just with three new board members, you know, how do you feel about one, and set some norms.
Absolutely, and, and, and that's fine.
It puts you together, it gives an understanding, and you agree on these together, and hire a team.
And there's strategies in doing that, you know, like I said, we, we facilitated some things as an outside type of source, but people can do it on their own too. I, when I was a principal, I had all of my PLCs, professional learning communities, establish norms of how to operate, because they help you all those things. And in your, in your, um, packet, in your folder, you notice I, I'm not gonna go through these details, but when teams are starting, uh, there was a Tuckman model of norms, uh, uh, norms, and they're state, and then Tuckman talked about, core stage, you said, teams go through. They go through the forming stage, that's when everything is so slow. Everything, the forming, they didn't know each other, they're shaking hands, they're like, okay, what's your background, this is my background, whatever, okay? Soon after next stage, and it's not happening to you all, so don't, don't, don't expect it, it's not, it's gonna happen. You go through the storming stage, okay? That's conflict, okay? Not all conflict is bad, and conflict is good if you operate, you know, if you operate through it in a certain way, okay? And that's why you wanna have those norms, to help you manage and navigate through your conflict, your storming stage, because you have to have that, you have the differences of things, and you wanna have those things because it's important, okay? And then once, go, I'm sorry, go ahead, Christina.
That's how you were lying, I guess, that you narrowed down things.
Absolutely, and may, and, and, and it may become, it's personal, because it's your belief, it, it, you feel it's personal when somebody doesn't agree with you, because you're like, I was raised this way, what are you talking about, you know? My father instilled these values in me, and my, your values are not match to mine, so it becomes really personal. However, if you have those norms in there, during that storming stage, it can help, okay? Because it's not about being personal.
Then you hear a phrase like, you're like, oh.
Yeah, yeah, it gives you different perspective, yeah, absolutely. So, you go through that storming stage, and then you start, you, you, uh, then you start norming, and so, in, in order to, so, no, that stage comes after storm. In order to get out of storming, you're gonna need norming, because storm is gonna come, okay? The weather is coming, right? So, you're gonna need the norming, so, like what Patty said, maybe we all need to think about it in the, in the, uh, uh, upcoming meeting, establishing some norms, that's probably something y'all wanna think about, okay? And then after that, of course, use norm, and then you start performing as a team, because you sort of understand. And you all are doing some stuff with the strength finder today, so, that's, that helps as well, right? Did I put, okay, yeah, yeah, all right. Sorry, I'm kinda going through that, I wanna go through that. Also, remember, I was talking about the roles, roles are for structure, they're not for power, on both ways. So, uh, board presidents, you know, whatever the case may be, they should not vice presidents, it's not about them, I'm controlling this, okay? Remember, they, they fall under collective authority as well. However, they're to help with the agenda, they're to help coordinate the agenda with the superintendent and the other fellow board members, and they're not about abusing power either one way. Not saying, not, don't get me wrong, not saying that Sam was wrong in starting the meeting on time, if it would have been a norm though, it would have been easier for him to do that, okay?
That leaves it from being personal.
Yes.
Because what, it's just that I.
Yes, because Barry took that as a power struggle, so that's what happened. So, he took the role of Sam as president as being a power struggle, so, I'm gonna catch you, you caught me, I'm gonna get you caught up, okay? So, that's very important. All right, so scenario five and six, we're not gonna read it, we're not gonna go through the same exercises for the sake of time, but let me tell you what was happening in five and six. So, Tamra, uh, kind of aligned with the people who voted for her, I think it was Carl and Barry. And what they started doing, they, they were the part of the three vote for Coach Frank. They started doing, they started meeting in the coffee house, the local coffee house, and started just having meetings, this conversation about that, okay? Uh, then, and scenario six, uh, the other board members, the other four board members caught wind of it, Stuart, and were like, we gotta do something about this coffee house meeting thing, because it's sending the perception that what, what's, what's starting to happen? There is, and what kind of perception is sent to the community?
Not functioning as a board.
Yes, yes, they were split board, okay? It's showing in three, and, 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 let me ask you this question, is it illegal for the three men to meet?
No.
No, it's not.
More, more.
It's not, okay? It's, it, you have to be careful when you start developing a form though. It would be illegal for them to meet if you only had six, you know, six, uh, if you only had five orders, so you have to be careful of that. So, it, but it sends a perception that, they were, what's going on? The community was starting to see it, the staff was starting to see it, like, why the three men go over here? And it sends a perception that you're not functioning as a collective, okay? So, the three men start the meeting, the other four got wind of it, and then they started talking about, well, they, you know, sore losers, kind of, so, so, to speak, I'm, I'm gonna hire this other guy, and then Tina, she's like, well, I, I, I think we should hire staff, staff members. And so, they start texting each other about what they should hire. Now, we, when you think about it, the three who were meeting in the coffee house, they should have been doing that. But the four who were texting about who they're gonna hire, there were way more danger in there.
That was actually illegal.
That was illegal, yes, because they weren't having a meeting, okay? Even if it's on the phone, they were making decisions, and they did that all the way up into the board, so, okay? So, you have to be careful, and that's one of those things that you can unintentionally violate your code of ethics. Because you would think there's no harm in just texting somebody your opinion about that, but when it's four of you all, and you're talking about that, and it started, because they were talking about those other three meetings, but they started to be, I'm like, this is a pot calling the kettle black, you know, you can't do that. You can't, you're having a meeting, and you're making a decision via texting, okay? That's what four, uh, five and six, five and six was about.
Parents, is it illegal for the, the three to meet and discuss something that went on in a closed session? I didn't think that, I thought it was illegal for you to even talk about a fellow board member, what was talked about in that closed session.
If, if, outside a closed session, yes.
Yeah, outside.
Yeah, yeah, outside a closed session, if nothing has.
We met in closed session and voted to not rehire Frank.
Mm-hmm.
We went and had coffee together to discuss it, complain about it, you're, you're talking about something that went on in a closed.
Yeah, that's what, there, and I'm not, I'm not one of our lawyers, so I don't, don't quote me on that, because if you all, I always ask the questions, I, I don't go too deep on that, because I don't know, I don't have my knowledge base on that, I don't know law, but I do believe that if you're discussing, especially if it hasn't been disclosed to public or, and it hasn't been recorded, record, uh, if you're discussing issues that have just been made, like when she posted it, then you still violating comments.
Discussing somebody else's, right, it's, that it's even just in two board members together.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, yeah.
Or it's just, can't talk about anybody else.
Well, it's not, it's, it's like I said, don't quote me on that, I don't know about the number, I don't know about any of that. I'm sure that board members can talk about issues, uh, without their being, as long as they're not form, present, or they're making decisions about that, because you don't talk about that. But it's definitely with someone else, like, don't talk to your wife, or your husband, or whatever. Yeah, so, I'm not sure about that, but hold that question, Patty, because I wanna ask that question, because that question hasn't come up, but I don't wanna quote you on that, you know? I don't wanna, yeah, you have a question about that, you remember?
When I go to closed session, and I have to, I can talk about it with the elected officials afterwards, after closed session, but I'm not elected. But I don't need to elect to be trying to talk about it.
Really?
Yeah.
That may be the case, but you're supposed to talk about it in the closed session.
I think, I, I think I'm the exception, so sad, because I'm not, I can talk.
But it, but it might be the same thing, where like, uh, you know, administration, in a closed session, you can talk to a board member, which you can't talk to.
I don't think you can talk to two, I don't think you can talk to other voting.
Well, it, 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 hold that one, to you wanting to quote something, because I do know there's a thing about influencing votes, and things that made a decision in closed session, because votes can be, can make motions to revisit them and all those things, so I know there's some policy about influencing votes, but I'm not sure, so I'm not gonna go on record to say the number. But I am gonna bring the question, bring it back to you all, so, um, let's move on to the next scenario though. All right, so, because I'm kinda working with time here, so, so I wanna go ahead and move to the next one. Uh, scenario seven, I'm gonna read this really quick, and I'm gonna just talk about it as a group. After Coach Frank was released from his football contract, board member John was approached by members of the community who were concerned about the impact Coach Frank had on the students of the football team. There were rumors that Coach Frank got physically violent with students, which caused some to drop out of the team. This upsets John, so he goes to the high school principal and asks for the names of the students who have, uh, quit the football team in the last five years, so he can get their side of the story and take further action on Coach Frank if needed. He also asked for the names and phone numbers of the students' parents, so he can discuss the issue with them as well. When the principal tells John that they do not give out this information, John reminds the principal that he is an elected board member, that he needs the information to ensure the safety of children, and will contact the superintendent and complain. Now, I brought this up, and I wanted to get to this one, we don't have to go through all the exercises, I wanted to get to some other stuff. But I brought this up specifically, because sometimes you can do bad things for good reasons, you understand that? John, it's not like John was like, well, this is personal, he heard something that this coach is possibly egregious to kids, okay? So, he wants to fix it, you're like, no way, we're gonna have somebody working for us who's like that. However, his way of going about fixing it, violating all types of ethical, you know, statements, right? What, what, what's one of the biggest things that he kind of violated? We talked about it earlier.
Or taken, taken not working through the board, and, and really, and not reporting issues, like this is one of those things that if you're not reporting, that, that information can be reported to somebody that has authority, really, is what.
Absolutely.
Who needs to, needs to have that information and like.
So, you talked about the two things, so, one is that he was acting once again on, uh, outside of collective authority, as an individual. And the other is, he didn't go through superintendent, okay? So, delegation, okay? So, delegation is key, and you can get into all kinds of problems when you don't do those things. All right, so, once again, some of those strategies, remember the purpose of your board meetings, okay? Remember to exercise the collective authority, okay? Because perception is reality, you heard that expression before? If the public are viewing people, and they see three board members who were elected, and I'm picking on you guys, because three of y'all were just elected. So, they see you all all the time out, they're like, what's going on with these three? Like, why are these three getting out with the, the, the other?
We're looking at the current political status of our city with the senior class today, I don't remember.
Oh, that's it? It's, you just never know what the community is thinking, right? They're gonna see something like that, so you have to avoid that perception, because perception is reality, and it's their reality that it's something going on with the board. They could be totally innocent, but you just have to be careful, okay, of that, okay? Uh, and avoid the individual use of pow, of power, okay? Uh, make sure that you appropriately behave towards each other and delegate. I wanna get to this delegation, because this is huge for boards, okay? Delegation, you think about the word delegation, what does that mean? To delegate, to give authority to, okay? A lot of times, you hear the word delegation, and it's like a negative connotation, because like, oh, you're gonna delegate, so you're like, you're the big bad boss, and I'm gonna say, I'm gonna tell you what to do. In this sense, it's not about telling the superintendent what to do, it is about what? Giving an authority to do, support, I like to use these words, it's supporting the superintendent to do work, okay? It's allowing, it's enabling, okay, the superintendent to do all of it. Those are all words everyone uses, except like, you're telling them what to do, okay? So, you're handing out there the time. All right, so remember, your governance team includes your superintendent, so it's the board members plus the superintendent, they include the governance team, so you all are a team. So, goes back to those capes, the superintendent has cape too, okay? And you're all in it for the good and right reason, to help students. When we talk about delegation, we like to use an analogy, we like to say, when you delegate, you are staying in the helicopter. As board members, you up there, you in the helicopter, okay? Um, anybody, you don't have to be a pro to understand the concept of fighting forest fires, right? So, what do the people in the helicopter do as opposed to people on the ground? Okay, so, they do what, or you say again? They organize, they give the location, you were saying something about.
Oh, I said, they give you the location.
Yes, yes, they have a wide view of areas going on, right? So, they can see the forest fire, whereas the, the ground workers, they only are on their section of the forest fire, they don't know what's up ahead of them. So, the people are in the helicopter, or like, system to be playing, I can see everything that's going on, like, I'll, make sure that you all don't go over here, I'll, I'll start another forest fire over here to burn out this area, so we don't have to have a spread, or allocate some water, some resources, right, to this area over here. So, being a board member is like being in the helicopter with forest fire, okay? You have to be careful of knocking out of that helicopter, because you wanna be able to delegate, okay, to the people on the ground of what they need to do, to allocate those resources, and to monitor, what makes your key roles. to allocate those resources and to monitor what's at your key roles. So it allows you to see the big picture, it allows you to understand the actions and how they all benefit the whole. It's the systems viewpoint, okay? When you're in the helicopter, you're delegating. They understand that all parts interconnect, they all connect to each other, and then you provide those necessary resources to the firefighters on the ground. I'm just gonna ask this question, and maybe he might have an answer to this, because you said you had a lot of check marks on there. But can you think of a situation that you heard about or experienced when a board or board member has gotten out of the helicopter? Oh, Sarah, maybe?
Yes, I can.
Can you think of a situation that that we can share, maybe? I mean, if you can't share, don't worry about it.
Maybe not, I don't know. We should see each other in the last.
Yeah, so it is open, so if it's, if it's, yeah, don't worry about it, but in your mind, everybody's situation, we can just think about these. So we don't have to get personal with our our two board, okay? But there are always situations where people just get out of there, and it can be for any reason. It can be for some of those reasons I talked about. Remember, sometimes it's unintentional, okay? They don't mean to get out of the helicopter, they just are like board member John. They have a passion for kids, so I'm gonna get out of the helicopter, I'm gonna go to the director's office as a prime example. Uh someone has passion, a temper, kids, and he's getting out of the helicopter, and there are bad things that can happen when he gets out of the helicopter, okay? So even if you're doing it for the right reason, you have to be careful of staying in the helicopter, okay? Because he could have undone a lot of the work that's critical to making sure that we do the right thing with Coach Frank, okay? Because to misuse the kids, it should have been hot line, it should have been all those things. And so John could be getting in the way. And so that's why you have to delegate.
I'll I'll just say this, I can kind of say this in generic, and say, if a board member gets out of that helicopter, sit down with them and talk to them. You're you're writing these policies, rules, laws, and they go back and do it again, and there comes a point where, you know, you have to.
You have to do something about it, you have to officially do something, and that and that is.
I know as a board, you can't get rid of a board member because they were voted on by the public, they're voted off by the public.
Boards have been censored, though.
They can be censored.
They can be censored, they can be stripped of their duties, uh to a certain degree, like if they're on committees, you know, they can be stripped of those committee duties and things of that nature. So there are things that if an individual, because that's all about operators individuals.
Hate to get to that point.
Yeah, you would hate to get to that point, but they're violating collective authority. So if board members do that, there's more harm than than good, even if they're doing it, like I said, for the right reason, okay? All right, so real quick scenario, your son is a wrestler on the team, but doesn't get a lot of match time. Your next door neighbor who is a friend who attended high school with you has a daughter who is also on the wrestling team. Your neighbor feels that her daughter is not being treated fairly because she is a girl in a male-dominated sport. She wants to talk to the wrestling coach and the principal of the school about ensuring there are equitable practices for all students in the school and wants you to be with her for support when she has this conversation. Will attending this meeting be an example of getting out of the helicopter? Yes, I see it, so we're getting, we're understanding that, okay? But is this a good reason? This is a good reason, I'm not saying you shouldn't get out of it, I'm saying, is this a good reason for motivating to want to do something about it? That if it's about equity, if it's about equity, yes, a reason, you're like, if this is about equity, if they're not, you know, letting letting the the female get match time just because she's female, that's a good reason. So like John, it's a good reason for a coach who's abusive, however, it's not the reason why you get out of the helicopter, okay? So my question to you is, how do you handle situations when they come up like John with Coach Frank and this situation when there's a equity concern? How do you handle that without getting out of the helicopter? Yeah, like, what would you offer that? Okay, so you would inform the superintendent, okay? Yes, so as to the people who are in direct responsibility coming in, you have one employee who you manage, and that's the superintendent, okay? So you talk to that person who you manage. What are some other things you do?
You direct that neighbor to do the chain of command, have you talked to that coach, have you talked to the academic, AD?
Yes.
Up the chain, go up the chain.
I do talk about chain of command, that's policy KL, that's your policy. But it is saying that you need to direct them to the level that can most appropriately handle their concern. Because other community members are not going to understand collective authority, right? They're gonna come directly to you, Amber, and they're gonna say, I helped you get elected, I need you to do this for me. Quit, form, form.
Exactly.
That's what they're gonna do, okay? And no harm, no matter, because in from everyday citizens, they think that this is how it works. They think that once you become a board member, and we think it, as as board members too, sometimes, you think once you become a board member, that you're gonna have all this power to all this thing, because it's just misunderstanding of how that works, okay? Staff thinks that, you know, I was a principal, a long-term principal, and a lot of my staff, a lot of people around me, they still thought when the board came off, you know, that's my boss, that's not your boss, okay? That's not your boss, I'm elected, elected, that's just one board member. So people are gonna come to you and say, I need you to do this for me. Your neighbors want to leverage you, your family members are going to leverage you, okay? But you have an obligation to take responsibility for your staff and the board and educate them. You don't have to, like, I can't do that, it's not the approach that you want to take. You just want to educate them, like, I know you thought that I was gonna have this, however, we, there's law and there's policy that says that it takes how I should manage things at the board, and we collectively do that, okay? So I will bring that up to our, my fellow board members and our superintendent, and we're gonna have that, uh, just that concern. We will follow policy. So have you talked to the principal, have you talked to the teacher, have you talked to those, those people who can most appropriately handle the problem? Do that first, and if that doesn't work, it will come to us eventually, okay? So educate people, all right? All right, so delegation is hard to let go, and I'm trying to rush you because I want to kind of finish, I want to get to a certain part of this. But there are some reasons why delegation is hard. One is because sometimes people feel like it's gonna be less quality if I don't do it, okay? Like, uh, why hand this over to the superintendent when I can just do this myself, because I am whatever. I'm 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 an educator myself, Christina, so like, I'm an educator, so I don't need to get it so that I can do, right? So it's gonna be less quality, okay? Or they're not trusting another person's expertise, okay? If we have a superintendent, they don't know all the details about this. I've been on the board for twenty plus years, Patty, right? So uh they don't even know, I know the history behind it, so I don't trust that person's expertise. Uh sometimes it's difficult, but they're gonna, you're gonna trust them to get the job done, okay? If you have a superintendent, you believe in him not getting the job done, you need to revise it as a board anyway, okay? Uh sometimes it takes more action, you know, more time to just do it yourself, right? So I can I can just tell Craig, Craig, bring uh uh bring me that the the mug, or I can come over here and get the mug myself. It's easy for me to just get it myself, but you have to be careful with that, okay? So you think you're doing a favor, you think you're doing the right thing, I I don't want to put that on your plate, I got it, I'll take care of it. But nope, nope, that's not, that's not right, okay? Um and then also control. Sometimes, you know, you don't want to delegate because you're like, control, everything. Some people have problems with control, but my wife will say, I have delegation problems with control, and I'll delegate to her because of control. And then sometimes you draw on personal experiences, beliefs, and connections. That means that you just have a idea of how these things have been done, and you draw on that, and you're like, well, it was always done this way, this is how we got this far, okay? So I don't want to delegate it because you don't know the reason why we got here, okay? But we need to delegate because it supports the authority of the superintendent, it creates clarity for staff, they understand the chain of command, it creates collaboration. You can't delegate to your superintendent without as a board discussing, you're a governance team, discussing what you want to delegate, okay? So it creates that communication, okay? It also creates efficiencies in operations, okay? So makes things efficient, it directs the board's attention on priorities, and I have this highlighted, so I really want to get to this, but I have about ten minutes.
Again, ten more minutes.
Okay, ten more minutes, all right. So it strengthens climate and culture, okay? And leads to a strong staff morale. You guys, have you ever heard of that, those terms, climate and culture? We use those terms synonymously in education, but they're not synonymous terms, okay? Anybody know the difference between the two, climate and culture?
I think climate is right then, and culture is overall, just like you said.
Yeah, I like that description. So climate, yes, climate is what you see and what you feel, okay? So it's what you see and what you feel, how you feel about the organization. Culture is, like you said, like, it's in the overall, okay? It's the business of it, it's how you do business, okay? So if we were to describe that, it's just like, as you all said. Culture is how we do business, it's the roots of the organization. I use the iceberg model to kind of demonstrate that. What do you notice about the culture of a business organization? It's a lot to it, right? It's overall, it's history behind it, it's tradition, it's expectations, it's procedures, it's policy, it's everything, okay? It's leadership, okay? Climate is how we feel about the organization. It's a really little bitty tip, you think it's huge, it's massive, and it is, because you can only see that, but you can't see all of what's underneath, okay? I always like to say this, we use climate and culture synonymously, but they're not synonymous terms. I always say, culture dictates climate. Culture dictates climate. What does that mean? Yeah, that's, I, it's fine, yeah, go ahead, you say.
How things are carried out depends on both the base philosophy and.
Absolutely, yeah. How you do your work, because remember, culture is the business, how we do business. How you do your work is gonna have a direct impact on how people what? Proceed and feel about the organization. So how you do work is how people feel about the organization. So as a board, if you had bad cultural practices like this board, you can have bad, if you do bad business, people are gonna feel badly about the organization. Culture dictates climate, so you have to be a really good board, because you don't want to have to start losing teachers, start losing staff members. Because I always say, people don't need jobs, they need bosses. That's that's true. It'd be money, you know, money is a factor, but money is not the factor, yeah, right? People don't need jobs, they need bosses, because if you have bosses who do not have bad business, so think about that. As a collective board, you have to be careful of how you do business, because we don't want people leaving Ozark. We don't want people feeling like this is a bad place to work, okay? All right, I know we're getting a little distracted, I'm gonna keep, I'm gonna bring us home soon. I'm gonna skip this. Let's just talk about Busybody Bob is doing some bad things as a board member, uh, doing some construction. They're adding, one time he goes and creates a punch list, and he shouldn't be doing that, okay? Overstepping Olivia, she does the same thing, she sees or hears a complaint about a bus driver, she goes through and she contacts the director of transportation and checks things out. She does it herself, checks things out, she shouldn't be doing that, right? Overstepping Olivia. All right, I want to get to this question, and I can probably end on this, uh, there's one little little thing, but we could probably do that as we transition. Uh, it's, you don't mind hanging up one of those, there's a lot to do there. So I'm thinking about cultural practices, and some of the newer board members may not be able to answer this question. However, I would like for you all to contribute as much as you can, okay? What are some board cultural practices that help increase climate or staff morale? So what are some things you all are doing as a board, business, okay, that helps increase climate in Ozark? Want to shout out some things?
The board, how, how many, for me, more open to the public and getting their input or questions, whatever.
Okay, time out, time hall meetings, okay? What else? Can you shout out some things?
That's fun, practice was done yesterday, I was invited to that, so just going in visiting with people.
What what what'd you say?
I'm visiting with bus drivers yesterday.
Okay, visiting, uh, visiting.
There was a breakfast, Mr. Thomas had a breakfast there, and it's kind of just to talk to people.
There's connections, responsiveness. Talking in here and go.
Okay, all right, any other things, like, anything official you all do? And I know this is hard for the newer members, because you you just now elected the board, but if you know what some things that when you were, you know, your child or something.
responsiveness, just feeling like there's a connection, an openness to your community.
Okay, open connection.
With the, I mean, I don't know, is the fortunate, right, with the students, the teachers getting this speed to the board is something that I think, if we talk about, is about increasing staff morale, you know, and giving them the opportunity to showcase what is happening in their classroom. I think that's the effort, or that's the purpose of that, mine, not fully knowing at all what that is, and that's the purpose of it.
It helps, it helps the board engage with the teachers, with the students, when, I don't, well, if you all work, and you don't have that opportunity to go in the building or with whatever event, to be there, to be appreciative of what those teachers, bus drivers, whatever they're doing. So we bring them to the board meetings to celebrate.
So so celebration, and bring, oh, that's great.
Yeah, question, archery and, yeah, and recognize.
Yeah, recognize, recognize.
All right, I'm gonna ask a hard question now, okay? It's not so easy to, sometimes we do some reflection. So second part of that question, we have all these things that we do that really help increase climate, those cultural practices. What are some cultural practices that we're like, we may need to revisit that, that could possibly decrease climate or add some uh decrease to climate? Anything?
Is it as a, as a?
As a board, as a board, yeah, mainly as a board. Or something, not something that you're doing, something that maybe you're not doing.
I'll say something, this board changed last year, and some of us felt undervalued, because when we would write or try to contact, there wasn't any kind of response. But now they, there are sort of response. If somebody writes, an individual will be right back and say, I got your message.
Okay.
Or, or, just, I think a person feeling like they're heard makes them, if they feel like you care about and value their food, then they're gonna stay employed. They're gonna give their best, they'll do anything for you, they don't make very much money, they'll do anything.
And that's a great one, to just respond to stakeholders, because remember, I said, anybody has a right to petition the board? How you go about responding to them is very important. So that's one of those things that, even if you do it, there's still a way that you need to do it, to make sure that you're not violating some of those things we talked about, right? So that, so because that doesn't mean that somebody talks to you about it and you all say, well, we're gonna make a decision about this, because you're operating individual authority. So, but it does mean it probably brings up to rest of your board member, and we say, we really need to address this in the community, because this is an issue, okay? Yeah, so great. Any other things? They were like, yeah, we, let's put these things in place. We talked about one earlier that you all want to work on. And it's not that you're not doing it, so maybe I need to reword it. It's not about you not doing it, but just some things that you're gonna do to increase health.
Setting our norms.
Setting your norms, yeah.
We have, we haven't really done that in a while, but we've really almost, totally been bored in a sense. And we can talk about renew, and then Mark came on last year, so we need to sit down and look at that. I don't, we're not a lot of vision and vision and all of that, but think about our norm to the board, how do we work together?
Set those norms, yeah.
Because if we, if we don't, then it's kind of like mom and dad, mom and dad don't get along, what's gonna happen to the family?
Mm-hmm, yeah. That's important, and along with that, and I'm just gonna have you all just for a second time, along with that is like ongoing training for each other, okay? You have the obligation to take the responsibility for yourself, you're gonna do some more additional training on my strengths finders and my personality types and things of that nature. So just engaging in professional development helps the board, okay? It helps all of y'all to engage in it.
That's true, because we expect our staff, administrator, all of them to do professional development. But in the same, we should be doing that as a board member.
You should be modeling.
Development, I be a better board member, so that I can work together with my other six fellow board members.
Absolutely, you should model that behavior, yeah, that's great. Yeah, any other things people want to add before I kind of close up? Okay, thank you for allowing me that time to get to that. I'd really like to get to this exercise, because it's really about next steps, with that, this is just saying, this is another state from my eye, there was a study that was done by the Iowa Lighthouse Study, and they looked at uh strong districts, and they found, and they used strong districts with different demographics, like different demographic students, different makeup of staff, all of that. And they found out that the one thing that all of these really strong, high-performing districts have in common is that they had high functioning boards. That's why you're like the little board member holding up the school, because it's so important for the board to function at maximum capacity, okay? So those are the things we discussed, but I'm gonna go back to my question now, this is my end. How many board members does it take to change a light bulb? You have the answer now. How many? What's the answer? Who wants to, who wants to say? Who wants to, who wants to say it?
Not that we all of us.
All of us, okay, all of us. Anybody else have another? Four, either four or a four. Zero, what do you mean by zero?
Oh, that way we got.
You got it, that's a trick. There you go, guys. A life of, it's a superintendent's job. Well, I do like all of those, too. That's the team, so yeah, all of them. It is a superintendent's job. Alright, so that's it. I know we're about to transition from President, if y'all have luck. If you don't mind, there is a reflection form in there that I would like for you to fill out, because there's more additional feedback for us, so I can close that. So a free two-word reflection form, so we need a moment to fill that out. That's been great, the transition, I appreciate that, thank you. It's a, it's a last key on the left-hand side, I think.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, alright, thank you.
At least I agree.
Yeah, no. Definitely need to do that.
Yes.
I think that our next one will begin immediately, so grab your food, and that's, we're gonna do that already. Yeah.
Yeah, I have, like, this bag, that has badges, yeah, so. If I'm off my feet for too long, it starts to age. Alright, thank you. Yep. I appreciate it.
Good stuff.
I appreciate it, I'm glad you enjoyed it.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah.
Alright. I like to do interactions. No, it's okay, I want you all to, just give me what you think, yeah.
Come on in, we can help you get your stuff set up. Terrence, appreciate you being here.
I appreciate you having me, yeah, it was good, right?
Yeah, we'll be seeing you around, okay?
Yep, yep, absolutely.
As we're transitioning, you're welcome. Stick her up for the next session, we're not, we're not, we're working on transition.
So you got to prove it, yeah? When you create, thank you. AC daddy, your AC daddy, you've done a lot of criticism.
But he already has an accountant. He, since he signed up, he has an accountant.
Because you, you create, you just create, there's, there's no.
I can get the IP.
That's because there's no AC daddy.
I can get that.
Because you need to stick it, there's, there's yellow, but it's not that.
I'm almost positive I can.
Okay.
I know.
I'm gonna, you're gonna get it right now.
I am. Yeah, I wish they had that.
I know.
We're not gonna be able to.
I use this.
Oh, you're here as a model, I swear to you. It didn't hurt you out.
Did you have your visa or any talent?
Yeah.
Bring your splendor.
Okay.
Yes, no, we should, yes.
Yeah, there's a, there's a dash too.
Yeah, I want to hit, grab something to eat, so, so, okay.
Did it work, did it work for you?
Don't, don't be shy. We gotta keep moving. I just got all the stories I could. Just got everything.
Let's see, do it.
Now, now's not the time to be shy.
Yeah, I'm waiting on, I have one right here, and I think press up. I have number. I'll let him get something to grab.
They want to just take.
Oh, you're a lot.
Yes.
So just get that back out, just give it to them.
So even when I, yeah, I went through the technical part, it's a hard day, and so.
Hold it, if you don't mind, what's the best time to do this?
I was wondering when they, when they start doing that, thinking about it, and so. Current, about that, now, I was interested to see how much they're there. For tomorrow. What, something for Andy's work?
Oh, you added all together, it was more than. I can give it to him. Yeah, die, die. Yes, that's my problem.
Yeah, I was about to say, we could down here, either, you're all in there. Do you want it all out, or do you want to do it each? Like, as you get to something, do you want to pass it out? Or do you want to pass out the whole bunch of it?
Good. Great thing about roasting jokes, you can just keep nibbling on it. Add, or that's the bad thing about roasting jokes.
I don't believe you, but I was thinking about it.
That could be too much info.
Yes. Yes.
So if we get, you should get one, maybe one.
So we like times two at lunch, or dinner.
That one's, that was hard.
We did, for breakfast for transportation.
Do you want?
I don't know, that's a good question.
I'm kind of thinking for me, as a board member, I'm trying to. Oh, that's, yep. I'm trying to do other things, okay? Here for the board. Unless. Were you ever, did you feel like you were the bad one? Or were you ever, did you feel like this? Yeah, uh, what would you can do? Yes. Yes, that would be, that'd be great, yeah. Sarah, I'm gonna go ahead and go with it, it's one of the bad ones for you. Uh, will you put that, if you can get that to Laura, and she'll stand on it. Yeah, alright, thank you all, yep. Alright, good luck, I'm looking at you.
Okay, I guess we could, that's short notice.
Oh, that's okay. Oh, thank you, double, thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Can I help get out or?
No.
I didn't give you the adults either, but I guess.
I do a normal session, so you all. Yes, just contact me, even though I have a whole. Rihanna, Brianna.
I'm just wondering if my first name was Frank.
Three more.
Should we get more?
I have plenty of things.
Hey, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Do you want some chicken to go?
Oh, I'm good.
Sure.
I'm gonna get on the road, I eat as much as I, not all food, so.
Alright. Be careful.
Alright, thank you.
Behave yourself.
She's begging for my heart.
What's that?
Can I kick you out?
You've seen my stress, I wouldn't mind one bit.
I was gonna say, I need you to come up, you're gonna.